Here.
Mayor O'Connor.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Is there a motion? I know Eileen is working her way through the minutes. She's had a really intense spring. So is there a motion to approve the minutes of the March 18th meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Any corrections or additions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Minutes are approved. We have one item under appearances. I don't think anyone else is here to actually make an appearance. Is that correct? That item is a proclamation recognizing May 19th to the 25th as Public Works Week in the city of Manona. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Manona. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Manona to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in Manona. And whereas, this year marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. And now therefore I, Mary Kay O'Connor, Mayor of the City of Manona, Dane County, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th to the 25th, 2024, as Public Works Week in the city of Manona. I urge all citizens to join with me in paying tribute to the employees of Manona's Public Works Department, and recognizing the substantial contributions they make to protecting health and safety, and advancing the quality of life for residents of the city of Manona. Signed in the city of Manona, Dane County, Wisconsin, this 20th day of May, 2024, Mary Kay O'Connor, Mayor. And I certainly think we can all agree that we all appreciate the efforts of the Public Works Department all through the year. There is no public hearing. We have our usual large consent agenda for this time of year. Alder Dupula, did you want to?
Yes, I would like to take the liquor license application for Salvatore's Tomato Pie out of the consent agenda.
Okay. And we will move that to the end then. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda other than the Salvatore's Tomato Pie liquor license?
I have some questions, so I'd like to pull these from the consent agenda.
You'd like to pull all of these from the consent agenda?
Well, I think that's probably one way to handle it. But we can vote them all as a group once I get a couple of questions asked.
I guess that kind of...
He can, you can have discussion.
Can we still have the consent agenda? Do we need a motion first?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
I noticed with one, for Walgreens, it looks like the fees didn't add up appropriately. The way I read it, it should have been $1,115 instead of $1,215.
So they also have a tobacco application, which is $100?
So that's included on here?
It potentially is. I do make sure before I send the licenses out that everything is paid correctly. Fees aren't actually due until 15 days before we issue the license, which is June 30th.
And then, okay.
They also might have been late too. There is a $100 late fee if it was late. I can't remember specifically for Walgreens though. So I can look into it.
Okay. And then the East Side Club, if there's a $100 late fee, that would be $715, but it wasn't completely filled out, so it didn't show a total.
I don't include receipts, but I do make sure all the fees are paid correctly prior to issuance.
Okay. It just, it didn't show in the application. Is it supposed to?
I generally don't make them fill it in.
Oh. Well then my other two questions?
If they're checking the boxes of what they're applying for, they don't specifically have to write in the fee.
Oh, okay. So that's not required?
No. It's, it's not a standard fee between every municipality. The state statute requires us not to go over a certain amount, but we determine the fee amount.
Okay. Then my only other question is with Fratelli's, there was a citation, they didn't have someone licensed on premise. How does that affect their license application, if at all?
Doug, do you want to address that?
Yeah, sure. So we had, they did, let's see, Fratelli's, they did appear at the committee, and we talked, talked about that. I think there may have been some misunderstanding as, by the owner, who has now educated himself and is committed to, to make him sure. He only, he was the only person licensed there, and he now has, I think he has, all of the rest of his staff got licenses or are in the process?
Yeah, he has two bartenders that are both licensed, and then himself as well.
So hopefully that issue won't come up again.
Okay. So they need to expand the number of people who are licensed to be able to...
Right. That's usually the issue we find when somebody, not always, but when there's nobody on premises, is that the, the owner just didn't, they didn't have enough people licensed. So I know Eileen makes an effort to keep track of that and remind people that they, you know, need to have somebody covering every shift that they're selling alcohol.
Okay.
I noticed the same, the same thing was true for the World Cafe. You probably saw that too.
Right.
So it, it's not uncommon. I mean, it's, it's not unheard of, I guess.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Did you have anything else, Rick?
No ma'am.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the renewal application for the 2024-25 Class B fermented malt beverage and Class B liquor license for Salvatore's Tomato Pies?
There's also a patio permit.
I'm sorry, and the patio permit under item 6D.
I will move approval.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to council action items. Under item 1A, consideration of Resolution 24-5-2706, approving a capital budget amendment for 2024 sanitary sewer lift station improvements put forth by the Public Works Committee. Is there a motion to approve this?
Move approval. Second.
Brad?
Yeah, so the Public Works Committee approved this on May 1st. I haven't received, and Dan has not received any questions since the first reading at council. So if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Does anyone have any further questions about this? Rick?
Hi Brad, it's Rick. I just wondered, I know with some lift stations, maybe not this kind, but has there been solar applications that have been available? Do you, do you know if all, this is a possibility with this one?
Solar is intermittent electricity, and these need constant power, and therefore they need to be hooked up to the grid. And there's backup generators, and those need constant power, and so those will be hooked up to natural gas. So in terms of critical infrastructure, it would not be advisable to use solar in this case.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Homquist?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Rodamacher?
Aye.
Alder Bernstein?
Aye.
Alder Dupula?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 1B, consideration of Resolution 24-5-2707, a word of contract for 2024 sanitary sewer lift station improvements, also put forth by the Public Works Committee. Is there a motion to approve this?
Second.
Any questions for, or Brad, did you have anything else to add to what Dan said about this last moment?
I have nothing else to add. It's just a bit of word.
Anybody have any questions? Hearing none, then would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Rodamacher?
Aye.
Alder Bernstein?
Aye.
Alder Dupula?
Aye.
Alder Homquist?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks Brad.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
I'm going to take the night, wait a little bit on the next item, and take the three, three of the four items under new business out of order, and move those up so these folks don't have to sit here. So I, and these first three are, I'll start for immediate approval. Item 2A, consideration of 2024-2025 Class B liquor and Class B fermented malt beverage licenses for Mr. Bruce, Manona LLC, doing business as Mr. Bruce Tap House, 103 West Broadway, Suite B. Is there a motion to, first of all, would you like to explain why we're taking this out of order, Eileen?
Then they can just, it starts July 1st, then they can know that they're either approved or, or not prior to them.
Okay. Is there a motion to take this out of order?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Is someone going to address this?
Sure, I can. It's, this is just a change in ownership. Mr. Bruce Tap House, everything else will remain the same. The applicants are here. If anybody has any questions for them.
Does anyone have any questions for Doug or the applicants, or Eileen, and your, the new owners?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We actually own, my brother Stephen owns, she runs our restaurant, but we have 17 total stores. And some things happen with the climate health-wise, and instead of trying to sell this, so I'm also like, you know, we love out here, and it's a great store that does very well. So it's, nothing's changing. It's a sailors, every Mr. Bruce Tap House. We're in Wisconsin. So we're excited.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Next item, also start for immediate approval, consideration of 2024-25 patio permit for Mr. Bruce, Manona LLC, doing business as Mr. Bruce Tap House, 103 West Broadway, Suite B. Is there a motion to take this out of order?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the patio permit?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further questions? Okay. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you very much, and welcome to Manona.
Okay. Are you going to keep those pickled chips on the menu? Because everybody loves those.
Great. Thank you. And next item, also start for media of approval, consideration of 2024-25 Class B liquor and Class B fermented malt beverage licenses for Teresa, Teresa if you would like to...
El Gallo.
El Gallo. That's what I was thinking, LLC, doing businesses, El Gallo, 6309 and 6315 Manona Drive. Is there a motion to take this out of order?
So moved.
Second.
And I assume this is for the same reason?
Yes.
All in favor say aye.
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 Is there a motion to approve the licenses?
Move approval.
Second.
Doug, or Eileen, want to?
This is a new license, or will be a new Mexican Grill at the same location as Edo's is currently.
Oh.
And the applicant is here, if anybody has questions for her.
So the same building, every, just?
If you want to, you do want to come over here, if you're going to ask me.
I was just looking up that address.
Sorry, same lo, what location?
The Edo, Japanese restaurant, Edo, yeah, Edo Garden, yeah.
I suspect there won't be any regulatory questions, they'll be more menu related.
Right, yeah.
Here, I think it's...
Teresa, did you have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not. I just, congratulations.
Oh, Rick?
Yeah, I see there are two addresses. So are there two buildings that you're working with?
It is the same building, but a long time ago, but it was like two different addresses or like blocks. But it's the same building. So like, how they are right now, it is the same, it's like both are numbers. Because they used to be different blocks, but it's just one building.
Okay.
When will you open?
I plan to open on October 1st. If everything goes well, we'll do that. And I plan to take the building by July 1st, and start making like some touch-up for like the Mexican Grill. And the plan is to open on October 1st.
Exciting. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, and welcome to Manona too as well.
Yeah.
Looking forward to it.
Can't help you.
I'm currently running Verona, El Charro, Mexican Grill in Verona.
Oh, okay.
Very nice.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, or moving back, I guess, to item 1C, convening closed session under Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85, Friend 1, Friend E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. In this regards to transit service agreement with the city of Madison. I think we put this closed session on, in case people had more questions about the agreement, we can go ahead with it. If anyone has any questions regarding it?
I'd like an updated closed session.
Okay, all right. Well then, all in favor of going to closed session, will the clerk please call the, call the roll?
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Rodamacher?
Aye.
Alder Bernstein?
Aye.
Alder Dupula?
Aye.
Alder Homquist?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
I don't think we had a motion.
No.
I'm sorry, there was no motion. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move to, I move to convene in closed session.
Is there a second?
Sir?
Do we need to ask everyone again? I'm sorry, Eileen, would you please?
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Rodamacher?
Aye.
Alder Bernstein?
Aye.
Alder Dupula?
Aye.
Alder Homquist?
Aye.
Excuse me, Alder Moore?
Aye.
I think we'd like to go into the boardroom over here, for the closed session portion. Okay, moving on to item G1E, consideration of Resolution 24-5-2701, approving a transit service agreement between the city of Madison and the city of Manona, put forth by the city administrator. Is there a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Rodamacher?
Aye.
Alder Bernstein?
Aye.
Alder Dupula?
Aye.
Alder Homquist?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you all. And thank you to Alder Moore, and Bernstein, and Dupula for, and Rodamacher.
Moving forward.
For all the time you've all spent on this. I know it's, it's been a long haul, and we appreciate it. One item left is item 2D, presentation and discussion of 2024 operating referendum. And I think the city administrator has just a couple of slides to, just, this is basically just going to be an update at this point.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. I'll just get this up here. At the right screen up here, let me see here. It shouldn't be up there. Put it down maybe? There it is. Hiding on me. There we go. So thank you, Mayor. We just wanted to do a couple, couple quick updates. Staff has been working with Miller Communications on kind of preparing our, kind of our information summary regarding the upcoming referendum. So this is just kind of a brief process, really update on where we're at. Again, we were basically trying to prepare, we started with the three option scenarios, remember the impact on the tax base that this body covered, reviewed, approved back in February, I guess it was already. This is just a quick recap of those items here. Let me get this out of the way. So again, this was like, option B was actually kind of the preferred option at the upfront, at least that council had identified, with a couple of minor adjustments. So just kind of set that, this is, again, these, these numbers here were for the 2025 budget year, essentially, just to remind folks. As we're going forward, certainly going to be needing, the, the key thing we're kind of focusing on now is actually looking at what we do beyond 2025, in terms of how that actually would be deployed, and what those impacts would be. Wanted to kind of point out, one thing we've, we found out, I guess, sort of the hard way, in terms of dealing with this. Many, if you follow, anybody in the school district referendums that have happened, you kind of see the, this a flat percentage for each year for a certain number of years. And it's kind of generally how they would approach that. Municipalities are not allowed to do that. For some reason, we are treated differently than, than other units of government who need to do this. So essentially, what we have to do is, we have to identify how many years out we'd like to go, and essentially have to levy for the high end of that timeframe for each of those individual years, as far as we're going out. So we basically have to levy for more than we're actually budgeting for, for the first several years, until it would actually catch up to that. So again, it's, it's an odd scenario, but that is, it is done very intentionally by the state legislature. It's intended to make it, it does make it very much more difficult to get these things approved and, and passed forward. However, we certainly are working forward towards options on how to make that happen. So, so just wanted to come, so it's one of the reasons for the difficulty in analyzing some of these future years, it comes specifically from this restriction in terms of how far we can, we might want to go out on these things, so.
Neil, is there a way to move the, I don't know how to describe it, there's like a
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah, I buy, unless, yeah.
Or minimize it perhaps?
Yes.
So that the full?
Yep, good call.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Very nice.
Yep.
Go back to the one before, maybe.
Yep.
Just for a moment, so that...
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
So again, this is just a comparison of the, we are, we are treated differently than essentially the school districts or other units of government. We are, we're not allowed to split you. Again, ideally, we would be in a situation where we're just saying, we want X percent for this many years.
That's insane.
And be done.
Makes no sense.
We, fully, the staff fully agrees with that assessment. It is a very difficult scenario. It does make it even harder for municipalities to, to undertake this type of effort.
So do you believe that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, Mark, can you explain this in like a simple term of?
Yeah, the same question.
Ten dollars?
Same question, yeah.
The average person's going to read this and have no idea what this means. I think I know what it means, but I'm not positive.
So basically, the first year, you say it's $2 million, you budget, that's just get everything up to speed. And then the next year, we were planning on increasing the levy by like another 3% or something like that. Otherwise, it goes back to net new construction. And again, net new construction's going to be fairly low. So in order to maintain what we're doing a referendum for, we still need to add more money in in 2026. So we had to put all, so what we think we need for 2026, it's, I'm just going to say $200,000 in '26, $20,000 in '27, just in '28, 30, or '29. So it's three years, four years at $800,000. That number would go into the referendum number. So instead of $2 million, it'd be 2.8. But we don't have to, but we don't use that $200,000.
Well, the 800.
800,000 till the next couple of years. So it's kind of, it's a racket, to be honest.
Right. So you're asking for 2.8. Can the referendum question actually say 2.8 over five years, and we won't be using eight, eight of it?
Until, you know, yeah.
And that's what we're trying to narrow down.
That's, exactly. I think we probably over, I think that much money over a certain time, we can say, but we can't, the actual individual budget limit, in terms of what we budget up to, is still going to come up to the, you know, basically self-control by this council. You can, arguably, you could use up to full capacity in one shot and be done, and then be stuck there, the rest, for the rest of the duration, which obviously doesn't help us, if we need, would need to do that. But so the idea would be, the levy essentially goes up immediately for however many years we would need, we're planning for that, whatever that window would be. But then the budget would theoretically would slowly increase up to that number. So you would actually hit it, we would actually be adding a fund balance for several years until you match that number, and then using that same fund balance to go forward past that. So you'd still be levying up to the minimum, but then you'd be using fund balance to get to match what that expense would be.
Each year, you'd take an additional $200,000, say.
Yeah, you should take that $200,000 upfront.
It is a, it is an incredibly clunky, obnoxious way of having to do this.
So your tax per, an average house or per $100,000 is a lot higher because of that reason, you know?
Yeah.
So it really hurts that way. When somebody just looks at it, like really this, you know, set of, I'm just going to throw a number, say it's $100, $100 per $100,000, now it's $120 per $100,000 because of that reason.
Well, yeah, and goes against the premise of you shouldn't have to pay for taxes, operating taxes.
So we pay it.
For the future.
Right.
When you may not even live here, to pay, like, you're paying for someone else's service.
Right. So it's something we're trying to figure out.
Alder Wood, did you have a?
Yeah, I mean, there's also nothing to prevent the, the future mayor and council from saying, well, we're not going to put in fund balance, we're going to spend.
Yeah.
I mean, there's an argument to be made for that, really, but, you know, depending on how, if you look at the needs, you know, I think you could, you know, ultimately, if you, the sooner you go to the max, the more capacity, more levy capacity you have over the five years or however, you know, so. But on the other hand, it's also kind of a test of, hey, if they actually let us levy the amount that we think we need, you know, then that's what we'll do, and we're not going to levy more than we need. So, that, so I, I do think the percentage increase, we assume, is obviously huge in how many years out we're talking about.
Yeah, I think they were working six years at 3%. So they can talk, we've been talking about taking that back a little bit, or 4% for six years.
Yeah.
I think we're talking about moving that back to maybe four years or something like that, but, because it could be a change in the government too. I mean, as far as the district paying back could have an effect on, so.
Right.
Yeah, maybe that the legislature will change something about this. I'm not holding my breath, but.
Right.
I wonder, like, is, do you think the spirit of the legislation leading to this law, I mean, is this, is it in the spirit of maybe that, you know, it's forcing cities to sort of think ahead, or to tell their residents, like, this is the worst it's ever going to get, and we're not going to come back and ask you again?
No.
Like, it's kind of like, we're, we're giving them the highest number possible, taxing them at that.
Yeah.
No? Okay.
I think in a, in a perfect world, that would be, one could make that argument, but I think this is specifically, particularly designed to penalize, I think, larger cities especially. But ironically enough, I think some of the folks who would suffer the most from this are some rural cities, and we don't have any tax base growth. They would be facing, you know, even though they have acres and acres and acres of ability into annex, there is no growth happening. So they're under basically the same restrictions we are for net new construction.
Yeah.
So ironically enough, even in more rural areas, the state could be suffering as much or more than we are even with this, so.
To me, it's, it's of a piece with the whole idea of having levy limits, which is saying they don't actually trust local elected officials.
Right.
To figure out their own budgets.
Right.
And, you know, so this is just saying, but, you know, we'll let you ask the voters for beyond, more than that, but we're going to make it hard.
Yeah.
You know, so. Why schools are treated differently, I don't, I don't know. I mean, those are maybe a little easier. So, in general?
The Manona Grove District has done that, I think, the last two referendums.
So I think just to, the first two points, bullets on the current screen are kind of what have been raised. You know, how many years should we be trying to go out to plan for? You know, we've been kind of going in between the four to seven year range. You know, what is the percentage of growth? In the levy, we need to sustain both the current level of service and anything new, trying to ascertain exactly what that number would be going forward in that timeframe. Also includes cost of living increases, that includes any other inflationary increases for services we're dealing with. So some items that we've identified, we identified in those, option A, B, and C, we kind of broke those things out, those, you know, projecting is what we think those costs will be going forward. I think driving, the, the third bullet kind of summarizes the first two, is how fast do we want to have to go back and do this again? I think driving, the, the third bullet kind of summarizes the first two, is how fast do we want to have to go back and do this again? Is, is the question, in terms of, you know, figuring out, you know, we could, we could do this every year if we wanted to. You could go to a referendum every single November and it would be difficult at best. And at some point, there's probably some fatigue, I think, from the, the citizens to kind of look at some of these things, but.
And you couldn't even do it every November because there's only an election every other November.
That's true.
So the, the only election that's held every year is in the spring, which is not exactly in our budget planning cycle.
If, for ref, if you, is there a time that you have to wait if a referendum fails to go back and ask again? Or is it just the next time?
I don't, I don't believe, I don't think so. I mean, there's just enough time if you have to.
There's only certain elections that you can have a referendum.
Right.
It's the turnaround time would be the issue.
Yeah, exactly.
No, I think there are some communities that I think are planning sort of backup referendum. If, you know, the November one fails, they'll go the subsequent election with a different question. So that, that says to me, there isn't a, a directional.
So obviously ultimately, you know, what, what, what does the final question look like? As certainly as to, we mentioned some structural issues, how you actually ask the question. Alder Moore, to your point, is exactly, can we, can we somehow language wise build in at least some additional information on timing? That's also the, the limit, the limit of a referendum question is you get two or three, two lines, a very limited amount of space to make your, make your case in terms of what you're looking at. We talked about statutory challenges of a binding, again, this is a binding referendum. So what, what the voters say matter on this one, it will essentially dictates what happens if we do this. So probably what we're trying to work is we're trying to identify the appropriate amount that's gonna be affordable for a majority of residents. And that's affordable is a relative term, certainly we'll be first to admit that. So we need to kind of identify, you know, what we think that is going to be. And again, at this point, this is for purposes of the community survey.
Yeah.
This is not setting the question, this is not limiting the budget. This is simply what we are asking, you know, kind of going out and asking residents, kind of getting a measuring stick on what they feel is, is in terms of those numbers, so. Just some very tentative dates, you know, we've kind of identified the preliminary budget scenarios that we've been working with. You know, we're kind of looking at, kind of establishing that, would have that maximum is for whatever total period we're looking at trying to identify at this point. You know, we're starting our budget workshops next Wednesday, so we'll have some, you know, might have even an update on this at that meeting. Looking at getting the community survey out here in June, so we have maximize, we've really at least have responses back for that. You know, probably working with staff and councils in, in July and August to really, you know, kind of formulating the referendum question itself. Staff is already planning on preparing at least three budget scenarios, so in terms of depending on where we actually end up falling. Hopefully be able to dial those in a little bit closer once the survey results are back. We'll know a little bit which ones are more of the priority. And then we're kind of into our normal budget process. Obviously we will get to the election, we find out if the, if the referendum passes or not and we will move forward with whatever budget scenario is basically approved by that particular referendum.
So, with the community survey, I'm assuming it's not just what tax increase makes you feel okay.
No.
You know, and so, and as we've talked about from the very beginning, I think the community, I'm assuming, because we've hired professionals to do the surveying, I'm assuming that the community in the course of that survey is also gonna be told what the alternative is. Like what sort, you know.
There'll be a lot of background, concise background information as to what is, why this is needed.
Why it's needed, but, and what happens if it doesn't, if we don't do anything. Like I think people need to know, I mean, they're, they're the ones keep saying, why aren't we, why, why not work at least? We want bigger fire, we want, you know, this, that, and the other thing, you know, everybody loves the public works. I'm glad we passed the res, you know, the resolution tonight, but, you know, all that stuff could go away.
Yeah, exactly, no, and we have, we've been, we've had a lot of conversations on that particular topic, Alder, and I think we're looking at in terms of that overall schedule. You know, kind of the community service is kind of saying, so we're staying with pretty much the cost to continue, the cost plus priority positions, and then there was the cost plus priority plus near term position. So those three options that we discussed with council are back in February. If we get a situation where that very first one, the cost to continue, doesn't get support, once we report on those issues, we will be coming back to council with a, either a budget workshop or a meeting here identifying what we think those cuts are gonna need to be. It'll be a very, very not unpleasant conversation at that point, but you know, we, we certainly have that on, on our, in terms of the overall schedule, that's absolutely what will be, what will be happening and we'll be sharing publicly at that point.
Done.
Yeah, the more I think about it, I guess, I know ideally, like, we would like to sort of have this referendum fix the budget problems forever. But it's, that's, you know, we, that would be wait like, we could say 10 years and then the numbers would be totally astronomical. So I, you know, I, I think we need to think about going forwards to the shorter end of even three or four years rather than anything longer because it's, I mean, what Brian said, it's, you know, you're asking people to pay for things that they may not, you know, be around to enjoy. And it's just the practicality of it, the farther out you go, the bigger the number gets. Same thing with the percentage increase assumed, but, so.
This is, I mean, the very discussion we've had with the compensation study in plan in terms of, you know, not being able to keep up those markets and puts us into this type of position. And we can expect that every so many years if we don't, if we don't keep up with those things. And we may not be in a position where we can every year. But eventually we are in a position where we have to make that one time adjustment to try to catch back up if we're not allowed to do it on a, on a regular basis. So that is, that is definitely the challenge, is finding something that is, is, is budget friendly in a way to, to the taxpayer as much as we can in terms of minimizing the impact, but still generating the revenue we need to make the investments in staff and operations that we need to make, so.
Our number one priority is the staff compensation.
Absolutely.
And I think when we're talking cuts, and I'm not gonna get into that, but we have to realize that, I don't know, what is it? How much of our budget is public safety half?
Yeah.
I mean, we, we can't, we aren't gonna be cutting public safety, so that leaves a whole lot less of the budget to make some pretty major cuts to make a compensation plan work. So just food for future thought.
We'd still likely involve positions, services certainly, definitely.
Yeah, and we're not even talking about a new position, it's, no, we're just talking about the compensation plans, so.
So that certainly is my update for now, we're gonna continue to have hopefully a regular update discussion going forward.
So shy of a, you know, a new leaf at the state level around levies. Is this in fact a situation that we're always gonna be, this is gonna be worse now because we're catching everybody up compensation wise? And then after that, one presumes we'll stay on top of that. But, but, I mean, Mark, I mean, I know you're saying, you know, we don't have much in net new construction, but we're continuing to develop, but are, are those developments never, or are TIF investments ever gonna help us?
Yeah, I think there's always gonna be a state levy for a long time until there's some change overall at the legislative and stuff. So there'll always be that, but I also think, you know, there is gonna be some net new construction, you know. We got the 28 million dollar balloon coming in, we have the basin project coming in, we have the final north point. So there will be some numbers there coming in, it won't be, it depends if it's split over two years or not. I know the CDA is working on some large, or just not large, but a lot of TIFs, I know we're having a TIF meeting next week. So there is, you know, possibility, there is gonna be net new construction. So that's why I think going out all those years, I think it's probably better to go short term too because we'll have a better idea of where we're at a couple of years. Be my opinion on that, because I think we are gonna have, if the CDA and everything goes through and it takes off, I think there is gonna be some increase in that new construction.
Yeah, I mean, I'm certainly as Chair of the Plan Commission, I'm certainly familiar with most of the stuff, it's sort of in the pipeline, but I, I just didn't know. And I didn't, wasn't suggesting that the levy would go away, but just that whether the legislature might adjust its thinking on the levy so that we wouldn't necessarily have to.
The biggest issue too is we have two, basically by next year, so it would be almost at $2 billion equalized value. So just to give 1%, it's, you have to have a 20 million dollar project, you know, so, you know, 2%, it's a $40 million total net new construction. So that's where you run into.
It's a lap number.
So that's where it becomes hard too, it's a kind of weighing all that stuff, it's a big puzzle, but weighing all that projections together.
I mean, there has been some talk, you know, if we had a different, if there were some changes in the legislature, if they were just to say everyone could automatically build in like a 1% increase, that would make a huge difference for us, you know? And for a lot of communities, because, I mean, we're in rough shape, but there are a lot of these smaller communities up north that are, they're just cutting into bone. It's just, they don't have anything to cut, it's terrible.
But it, it is sort of a double whammy for Monona in the sense that you've got a high equalized value, like Mark said. So it's tough to hit your percentage, but you're also landlocked.
Right.
So you're not geographically growing and, and, you know, constructing that way, so you, you're sort of hit twice.
And any redevelopments, always complicated, more expensive, Alder Wood?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, that at one time, the levy limit did allow you to, either it was net new construction or whatever the CPI was, but that was much easier, you know.
It was a lot easier.
It was much easier to, to live with. And, yeah, there, the discussion we'll be having on creating a number of TIFs, some of those could, you know, if they come, if they come to fruition, could be very large and could, you know, make the future easier to, much easier on the budget. But, you know, we haven't, we haven't really gotten to the point of creating, even creating. You know, we're still in the discussion stage of creating TIFs, let alone having actual projects, so.
Yeah, it's, we're talking years, yeah.
And I'll say, Alder Moore, where certainly staff is always gonna be on the lookout for alternative revenues. Anything outside of the, the tax levy that we can leverage successfully, we wanna make sure and bring those options to this council. So we, we are constantly on the lookout for those types of things. Sometimes those are smaller items, but every once in a while, maybe we get one that could be substantial and move the needle, so.
All right.
Can I just say one last, one last thing?
Yeah.
I do think the number, whatever the final number comes out to be, I don't, I would not expect it to be a number that is pain free. And I think we'd want it in fact to be enough that people go, oh, that's, you know, it'll be a noticeable increase because we're making up for a lot, you know, a lot of issues. Not so big, obviously, they just go freak out, but, yeah, it's gonna be for all of us. You know, it's gonna be a noticeable, noticeable amount, so.
And when would the first time be that people would feel that increase?
Next year.
The tax bill come out in December.
So December of 2025?
Twenty by four.
It'll be for 25 budget, so you'll get your tax bill in early December.
Of this year.
Yep.
Okay, so more good news to come, yeah.
I guess my only thought that's kind of rolling around in my head, and, you know, I'm very aware that our chief is sitting right there gonna hear what I'm about to say, but, I mean, the mayor said, well, of course we can't cut public safety.
Well, there's some state laws against public, cutting public safety, I mean, there's legislation. With shared revenue, we lose our shared revenue if we, yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
There you have that.
They get you coming and going.
They do.
Yeah. All right, well, I think that's the end of our regular agenda, I'm gonna move on to reports of committees, commissions, et cetera, any, thank you, Mark, any updates or discussion on diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts?
You know, I have one, what was it, yesterday? I was invited along with some other alumni of the ARC, the Monona ARC Anti-Racism Circle, the Monona ARC group. They are just wrapping up what is either, I should have written it down, it's either their fifth or sixth circle. And I just, you know, this is one of those things, it's almost impossible to measure, you know, what impact is being had, you know? What, what's, what benefit are we seeing from it? But, you know, when you think of, you know, 50 to 60 or more people that have sat down with their neighbors and had really hard conversations about race, and then, and then those conversations sort of spill over into, you know, a conversation and another conversation, or just the way you look at things differently, the way you change your perspective on the world. I, I think it's an amazing program and I would love it to continue for many years. And so if you're listening to, to this and you are curious, you can get online and you can just do a search for Monona ARC, A R C, and sign up and join in, it's just a wonderful program.
Anyone else? Anything on sustainability?
Quick update here, um.
Neil?
Assistant officially met with representatives from Clean Wisconsin this afternoon. They have currently received a fairly substantial grant on helping local municipalities do facility improvements. So kind of volunteered to sit in on their, on their work group that they're going to be trying to coordinate with multiple municipalities and trying to figure out the best way to leverage investments and provide technical resources to different cities as they pursue different types of projects, so. Beyond that, not sure exactly where it would go, but they had reached out, sort of familiar with what some of our local sustainability efforts were and, and wanted to know a little bit more and said we would be happy to at least sit in on the, maybe a quarterly meeting to discuss options, so.
Nice.
Hopefully a nice resource for us, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just, I just noticed the Inflation Reduction Act had another round of openings where people can submit applications, but it's really just still focusing on lower income communities, which, as it should, you know? Lot of stuff happening there.
Moving on to committee reports then, Alder Bernstein?
No report.
Alder Rataimacher?
No.
Alder Wood?
License review met and we, we covered that in the first half part of the meeting. And Parks Board is having the, is meeting up this Thursday at 5:30 for the, is that right?
It's that, I believe it's this Thursday, yeah.
Yeah. For the annual bike tour of a few of the parks, so.
And where are you meeting?
That's a good question. We usually meet either at Schluter or at Grand Crossing.
Schluter was last time, yeah.
Schluter?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's Schluter.
Alder Moore?
Yeah, the Plan Commission approved a new executive storage facility over on, over next to, or behind, if you will, Merrier, Unity Health, near Menards there. So that's a, another building and, what was the other thing?
We already talked about it in text.
Oh yeah, there was.
I'm totally forgetting what the monitoring?
No.
Might have a text about it here.
Only texted because Mary couldn't make the meeting, so she wanted to know what.
Oh, it was the Papa John's zoning permit.
That's right, the zoning, was also zoning permit approved for Papa John's, which is going into the...
GNC.
The G, yeah, the GNC building, and Pier 37. And then I would just encourage everyone and anyone to go up to San Domiata right now and see what's happened in the last week or two in preparation for the Harry Whitehorse International Wood Sculpting Festival, it's pretty amazing. There's two lo, what are, longhouses, and the name for a longhouse in Ho-Chunk is Chisicetich. So there's two Chisicetich up there, one of them is like 18 by 32, built by Bill Quackenbush and friends, Bill being the tribal historic preservation officer, and the other one was built by Kenny Whitehorse, family member, Harry, of course, and it's slightly smaller, and they're, they're a little different, but they're very much the same. They'll be hosting the demonstrations and workshops that are being held on the site while the sculpting is also happening all week. And then there are 12 round structures that are similarly made with willow branches, and they're not built in the traditional way, but they're certainly a, a tip to the traditional Ho-Chunk round lodgings known as Chipotiques. And that's just all to say that the Wood Sculpting Festival is coming up upon us quickly, and there's still a lot to do, but it's gonna be very, very exciting, and we predict at this point that it's probably gonna be attended by thousands of people. So certainly, opening and closing ceremonies, and the beer garden in the middle, and everything that's going on that week is really exciting.
What are the dates?
And we're looking forward to welcoming the 12 artists that are gonna be here from all over the world doing that sculpting. And we just want to thank everybody in the community that's already contributed, the people that are contributing in kind, again, many, many community establishments, and, and encourage people to go to the harrywhitehorse.com/festival to learn more about the festival and to sign up to volunteer, because we're still looking for more volunteers.
Yeah, once you get on that website and just Google up Harry Whitehorse, you'll find it.
It's June 14th to the 22nd, right?
Yeah. Sign-up Genius is right there. June 14th to the 22nd, nine days.
Yeah, and there should be a sign-up genius if you just go to the festival portion of the, of the Harry Whitehorse site, it's
Yeah.
They're right there. Lots of opportunities.
Thank you, Alder Moore.
Thank you.
Alder Homepush?
No report.
Alder DePula?
No report. Doug mentioned parks, public safety, do not meet, and nothing else to add.
Okay. Chief?
Well, you folks, whoa, we're in closed session, I've just introduced myself to one of our newest residents in Monona, and welcoming here and bragging about this wonderful community and brushing up on my mi español un poco.
Welcome.
So.
Bienvenido.
Public safety announcement, since our city attorney has reminded me about the Q&amp;A session that I previously have held with this body. So we host many great events, very large-scale events, and we have one coming up next Monday, Memorial Day Parade, which is one of the, well, the longest-serving or longest-held events, but it's also one of the largest events in Dane County. We actually host two of the several large events in Dane County, the festival and the Memorial Day Parade. So all hands are on deck from your police department, your fire department, your public works and others who've been very engaged in the planning phase ever since last year's Memorial Day Parade. So we will make this a safe event, but we ask for members of the public to help in making it a safe event. You see something, say something, grab a cop, call 911, point something out to a firefighter. We all depend on each other to make sure that this is a safe event, and it will be, we just all have to do our part. So we're geared up, ready to go, excited to make sure it's a safe event and remember what it's for. Those who have given the ultimate sacrifice and paid the ultimate price for freedom of all of us that we enjoy here today, so that is it. Kept it under a minute, I think.
I assume Madison PD is gonna be involved in the Madison side of things.
Yes, one of the things, if you recall, since bringing me on as chief, I said, wow, we are bearing a good brunt of this shared jurisdictional event. It's called the Monona Parade because we have traditionally hosted it, it runs down Monona Drive historically, but half of it is within the city of Madison, so pony up Madison, and they have agreed and have been very good partners in providing resources to help with the police side of that event, so.
Okay.
Yes, they've, long answer to your question, but yes, they're, they're helping out.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Attorney Cole?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
City Clerk?
No report.
Neil?
No report.
I just had a couple of things. Remember, next week's workshop start time has been changed to 6:30 from 5:30 in the conference room, and I've been announcing this in various spots, we've got openings on four committees that I'm asking for applications for, and I've gotten quite a few, but I think I'll wait probably till after Memorial Day to start looking at them. Two positions on landmarks, we have a position on the zoning board of appeals, one on parks, and one on sustainability, so people can go to the city website, monona.com, and there is a form there that you can fill out to submit for appointment. I think that's everything I had. We have no appointments, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.